The Raffanah County Board of Zoning Appeals to Order. And we're being recorded, just in case anyone wanted to know. Okay. Did you? And Madam Secretary, if you would like to call and roll.
Oh.
Or I think you're the clerk.
I am. Christopher.
Here.
David.
Susan.
Alex Sharp.
Here.
Dr. Matthews.
Here.
And William Anderson.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there any comments or additions or suggestions?
I'm moved that we adopt the agenda as scheduled.
I'll send it.
Okay.
You might want to note for the record that from the time it was posted until today that there has been a change, that the variance for cattle has been withdrawn by the back end. So that is a change from the first time it was posted to our docs till today.
Okay.
It's in this, in this.
So he submitted an letter to that effect? And I guess, does he have waited here before he re-submitted?
No, because he lived here, so he then applied in the time.
Well, I don't know about that. Who says that? Because it says the day of the scheduled public hearing. And if he didn't withdraw it, after the day of the scheduled public hearing. So, I mean, I think he didn't withdraw, so I think he does have to re-apply. That's what it said.
What code section is that, David?
Yeah, there is something, but I don't want to do this.
But I know that's what it said. Because I read the documentation.
We never heard it.
Actually, you know, I do, sorry.
You didn't hear it, so the public never had a chance to talk about it. And actually, this committee tabled it because Mr. Anderson is absent. So it was this committee that said, you know, we don't want to hear it because we don't want to talk about it.
Well, there was, actually, it was the day before the public hearing.
Well, that's what, some of them, that's one of those changes that is sort of pending for the Planning Commission, because they weren't.
Were included.
Well, there were different ones. There was one for green zones, said one thing. There was one for variances and one for special use permits and special exception crimes. So, I think I should do how.
I think I did actually read that.
But, hold on a second, and I'll say what it says. I'm pretty sure, I tried to conform it, so they all say the same thing. But I'm not finding it, of course. But I will find, I'm sure that it says the day of, it was withdrawn prior to the day of the scheduled public hearing. So that's a little vague, because what, it was scheduled.
Right.
We didn't have, I mean, right, we tabled it, but what does that mean?
But it wasn't withdrawn the day before.
But it would have happened, been withdrawn, withdrawn the day before the scheduled public hearing.
And there was some reasoning on that scheduling. So that, I guess, so everybody doesn't show up to meet and define that. Anyway, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Right.
If we get to it. Okay, new business. There's Ashley Marie Fraser who come forward for a.
Special use permit.
Special use permit for a mobile home to use as a family apartment. We're going to swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing above it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, grab the seat and you can tell us first. Talking about.
Is what we're about to do. This orange proposed paper is put a single side parter which shall serve as a mobile home within two hundred feet of the existing home, which is my mother-in-law.
So that's right.
That's here.
Okay.
The proposal one is the one that is written over the digits of the page.
Okay, five to twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then, because the well is the work spot and it's just a. There is a proposed new step there on the other side of the post. Because we cannot cross our lines for obvious reasons. So that was the only thing that the other board had asked us about. We do have a plan for that. We have talked to the Health Department. There is no problems with the existing, it's just we can't cross waterways with second lines. And we've looked into everything in accordance with that.
And you are the owner, correct?
Of the modular.
Of modular.
The property is owned by my mother-in-law, of the, so many of us.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
The current, the bond for what we'd like to bring in, exterior square footage is 672 square feet. So interior was 654. I'm not, I'm just, it's something like that. And we would, in the future, like to add an addition, because we do know that per the special permit, it needs to be less than 1,200 square feet. But in the future, we would like to add a little bit of square footage, if possible.
To live in, or that the porch or?
To live in.
To make up.
Well, I got the balance, but I mean, we also have to include roofs and decks to be part of that.
Okay. Yeah, and it has a stoop that's already attached to it, which is in with that 672 with the way that we did the measure.
So when this says mobile home, is really a modular room?
It's got wheels. It currently is jacked up on center blocks. But what we would like to do is put it on a full permanent foundation.
So this is somewhere else? Okay.
It's an existing one. It does need the code through the building permit office, because it is a 91. The only thing with Raffanah County's building permit office was it could not be less than 1,750. Because anything older than a 75 can't be moved because of lead and asbestos possibilities. The way that it could be moved, it could break or. So we did make sure that we went with age appropriate as well. Just couldn't afford.
Is it any questions?
Yeah, I'm a little confused of what, when it's drawn, which is the existing lot?
The existing draw is the.
Down here, up in the corner.
Yes. And the proposed one is going to be here?
Current one.
Yeah. It's a funny little, it has a very good draw.
But it's a proximal shape, I believe.
Yeah, it's a little.
And what's this little dotted one?
The dotted one is the existing fence. I just.
Do you put that in?
I did, I made a little key too at the top. The well is the dark circle. The non-colored in is the outbuildings. Colored in is the well and those, the current septic, the fence and.
Wait a minute, that's where I'm just. Where is the current septic?
The current septic is over here. Which is why we can't cross over and use the existing, because it's not.
So you're going to go up and handle the existing?
No, that stayed with her.
You're going to put it there.
Because either way, we was crossing waterways, it's not safe.
Was this in colors when you did it?
No, sir.
No?
That's why I colored some of it in and left some of it empty.
That's very good.
Good strategy.
Yeah? Yeah, that works.
I'm not a good drawer.
You did go out of the line.
Yeah. Okay, does that answer your question today?
Not exactly, although, you, so you don't own this property? And you lease the property?
No, so the deed is of my mother-in-law.
So are you, but you.
In shape for that.
I see that, but are you leasing it?
No.
Okay. And you know when this lot was created?
The lot was created in 1981, when it changed hands from grandpa to my father-in-law.
Who's grandpa, Ken?
No, Ken owned the property behind Jeton Mountains that. Grandpa was Grandpa Fraser, which was Ray Fraser Senior, who gave this lot to Willis and Ray Junior in 1981.
But was this lot existed already?
Yes.
So it was created earlier than 1981?
Yeah, that, I mean, it was existing prior to that, other than.
So in other words, it's been a three-acre lot since before this? This is just a new service?
Yeah, because years back, Mr. Fraser owned this and across the way, which is now Homestead Lane, because it got renamed. And that now belongs to another family. Your wife. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's all the questions in the present.
John? I don't really have any questions. And I think a mobile home is irrelevant, according to, to its own, you know, it's treated the same.
It's allowed, and I put that in the ad.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's treated the same as a.
The lot is, is it called Mini Factor House?
Okay.
The more modular things. Modular loans and Mini Factor Houses.
So are you looking to come back and apply again for an addition? Or are you wanting to get permission for an addition?
If it's.
Does she need to do that?
I don't know.
Because if we go through the vote, the zoning office.
Well, I mean, we authorized her to go to a certain number of sort of feet, and she hasn't yet agreed to apply to us.
The paperwork states 1,200 square foot is a special use permit.
And that's, you're correct.
Feet from the existing, from the 100-foot.
Well, okay, so typically, whatever you apply for, like what you show or tell us, is what we approve. So I understood you to say that you were looking to add on to it. And I just was wondering if that's something we might.
Well, because it's been advertised, and this is what the proposal is.
The square footage wasn't advertised. It just.
Well, you go past that in all the drawings.
But, yeah, the square footage, I mean, I would.
We could say up to 1,200.
Up to 1,200. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering how it would be.
You're simplifying things.
Yeah, it's, I might just say up to.
But we would want to make sure that it was not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed, and we have to go through the zoning ordinance and the building permit.
Actually, they approved it. That would stand, that would not stand? What is that? There you go.
The planning.
Oh, what did they say? Oh, okay, so if you understand, we also want to do that. Well, we need to have a question to come up with.
You're going to have a public hearing?
Oh, yes, I will. Thank you. Okay, as my colleague reminded me, I'm going to open the public hearing right now. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor or against or about this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is it, then I'm, I was sort of flailing around looking for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's in my district, so I would have gone to the discussion part.
I assume we are. Well, typically, yeah, okay, if you have some discussion.
Well, I think that there's, first of all, there's technical issue about the applicant. And if you look at section 170-55 of the ordinance, so 150, 170-55A, it says, "An application for a special permit or special exception may be made by any property owner, owner of an easement, possessor of the right of entry under power eminent domain," which we don't have, "less a contract purchaser or any official department, board of bureau, or government." So Ms. Fraser testified she doesn't own it, and she said they don't rent it, they don't lease it, they just live there.
I don't know if a lessor has to pay rent.
But I asked her if she was leasing it, and she said no.
But a leaser does pay.
Well, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I'll take my soul.
So I don't know what you can do about that, but I think that, I think that her mother-in-law is the property owner, and she's got to apply. Either that, or they're asking, they have to, because the next section says that they're supposed to, among the documents that are supposed to be submitted, is either, well, it says a copy of the purchase agreement or sales contract. It's not against the contract owner. Well, if that's not the case, but if it's a lessor, there's got to be a lease. So if they're not renting it, they're just living there.
Okay, so here.
And the property owner has to be the applicant.
Here's a question. If it's a family apartment, it can only be leased or used by a family member?
Well, that's right, but still, the owner is the one that has to be the applicant under the code.
Which is why she's here and was asked to be here and wrote a letter to state that she is.
Well, she can, that's all very nice, but she, if it's, the zoning ordinance says you have to be the owner or the lessor.
What is this letter you just referred to?
It's a letter that the owner wrote to state that she, to the back of the first page. And she's also present.
But she's not the applicant. She may be present, she may have written a letter, and I see what the letter says, but she's not the applicant. This lady sitting in front of us is the applicant. And she's neither the owner, and she said, underwrote, she's not leasing it, she not renting. Well, well.
She has, hold on, hold on, she's given them permission to file for bringing a single family dwelling?
She's given them permission to apply, okay, so that's very nice, but she can't change the zoning ordinance, Mr. Chairman?
Only give my written consent for either Christopher or Ashley to speak on my behalf at any time.
Well, they can speak on her behalf all they want. Their, the name on the application on page one says, "To the Board of Zoning Appeals, I, Lee Ashley Marie Fraser, the undersigned, lessor." She, it says here.
Does it say lessor?
Well, that's what it says on the application, but she testified she's not leasing it.
Maybe she was mistaken.
Then she testified underwrote, so, you know. Well, I mean, I'm just telling you, that's what it says.
So can we add mother's name to this as the applicant, since it's been?
I don't know, I don't think that you can do it at the meeting. I don't think you got to get her to apply.
You mean because somebody might have a problem with it?
I don't know if anybody has a problem or not, I just don't think that we don't, if the applicant that's before us is somebody who's authorized by the zoning ordinance to apply, we can't rent it. So that's, you all can do what you want to do about that, and I have some other issues as well.
Should we address that one issue first, since if we don't, then we don't need to go into all these other stuff?
Well, I, I make a motion just frankly to deny it on the grounds that she's not an authorized applicant, that her mother-in-law has to be the applicant.
Is there, okay, very good, is there a second to that motion? Okay, is there another motion?
Well, what I'm wondering about is, is there something that we can do at this meeting to accommodate the application? And it seems to me that the spirit of the ordinance is being fulfilled here, and that it seems to be a rather small detail that isn't of any real import to the sum of the application itself. And so what I would like to do is figure out a way that we can accommodate this application, and either, I, this is my field of expertise or experience, but could we, for instance, have the owner sign the application?
Okay.
An addition fee?
I would just propose this thought. You're saying you're not a lessor because you don't pay rent. And I'm saying that I don't think that makes someone not a lessor. I don't think that, I don't think that, so you may, and, see, when I've come before boards like this, I'm very nervous as well. And, you know, you get before a board, you know, you got, you were asked, "Are you a lessor?" And she said, "No," but I think, I think she's misunderstanding. I think she can be a user of the property without paying rent. And her mother is, or her mother-in-law has authorized her to do that, so. Well, I would be, I would be content with that.
I currently own the existing.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're getting hung up on the term lessor or lessor.
Well, with all respect, Mr. Chairman, you know, you can describe it as getting hung up, but that's what the ordinance says, and I mean, that's what our job is, to apply the ordinance. And those are the words that are in there. I didn't put it in there, the Board of Supervisors put it in there. And so, you know.
Suppose, suppose we.
What if they amended? I mean, I don't have a problem with them if they amended, but I think they got to comply. So if you want to pass it over maybe and have her mother-in-law sign.
Sign the application?
Or sign the application.
The other, the other.
Is that okay with you?
The other avenue here.
Does that, you're just.
Even simpler. The other avenue here, which is even simpler, is to say that you are actually a lessor of the property, and that you don't pay rent is not pertinent to that. And if you were to say that, your name, which is on the application as a lessor, would be sufficient to carry the application.
I'm Ashley Fraser of 121 Turkey Ridge Road, and a leaser of 121 Turkey Ridge Road. However, I do not pay rent or dues.
Do you have a rental agreement?
Sounds like it's broken.
It is.
It's a broken.
There's no law associated with that.
I don't have a written one. And she's speaking.
Both verbal agreements are legal.
And we have both parties to this verbal agreement here present.
And you verify it? Do we want to hear our motion?
I approve that we approve the application.
No, wait a minute, you said you were going to do it in steps, and I had.
Okay, well, it sounds like it worked out in the first, okay, well, I have a draw.
All right. The other issue that I have with this application is that it's on a non-conforming lot. And I guess that it's legal, it's, I mean, the plaque that's been submitted shows that it was approved by the Act Administrative Administrator in 1981.
I don't think that is proven by law.
I don't think so either, but.
That's just, all right, so.
But it's certainly a lot of record, and it's got an approval stamp on it. And so I think that it is a legal non-conforming lot, but it doesn't meet the minimum lot size for where it's located. And moreover, the density requirements in agriculture zones, this is in the agriculture zone, right, Miss Clasen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's. I'm just looking at the application, I want to see where it says that.
But we are allowed to do this.
Honestly, I, well, wait a minute.
The ordinance does.
Okay, it's in an agriculture zone, the density requirement for that zone is in section 170-37. In agriculture and conservation district, the maximum density dwelling units acres is one per 25 acres. So.
This is accessory to the main block.
I understand that, but whether it's an accessory or not, it's going to be another dwelling unit on a three-acre property. And I think that that conflicts with the 170-22 of the ordinance, very specific, says, "The maximum density specified for a giving zoning, given zoning district shall not be exceeded except as specifically qualified elsewhere in this chapter. Maximum density shall be expressed in number of dwelling units." And also, section 170-28 says, "Unless otherwise permitted by provisions of this chapter, not more than one dwelling unit shall hereafter be erected on any one lot unless the resultant dwelling density is less than one dwelling unit per 50 acres, nor shall a dwelling unit be located on the same lot of any other principal building except as an accessory use, as they may be permitted by the provisions of Article 7 or by, unless a special exception is granted." Well, Article 7 doesn't permit a family apartment to exceed the density requirements. I don't, if it does, you show me where it is, I don't think it does. So I have a problem with it in that it's going to make two dwelling units in three acres, which is not, I mean, that's way in excess of what I think the zoning ordinance permits. And I think by doing that, unless, well, even if there were conditions on it, but to do it without any conditions, such as it's not going to become, you know, when the owner of the property, they exit away or something like that, that it's going to cease to be used, then I don't think it can be done. I think, and I think by exceeding the density regulations of the ordinance, it violates the comprehensive.
Actually, this might be just to interrupt for a second.
Okay.
This might be a good time for you to, the Planning Commission didn't seem to come up with any issues, did they?
The Planning Commission didn't come up with any issues here, and the aspect of this, what Mr. Conick seems to be dealing with is a, it seems to me not applicable here, because what we are dealing with is a pre-existing lot that is, has a dwelling unit on. This is a secondary family subdivision, so it is.
It's on the same lot.
On the same lot, and, but it is a, it is not, it's a primary dwelling of the lot. And it would seem that it's strictly, it would be allowed.
It is, I mean, the density, I think Mr. Conick is referring to is not about accessory, it's about the dwelling, it's like the main block. Because this is done, I mean, this says here, "There shall be no more than one family apartment per separate parcel of land."
Okay. Fine, but that doesn't, that doesn't say that the one family apartment can violate the dwelling, the density.
But the first, long, long 25-acre lot would violate the density.
Right.
Because if the density is one dwelling per 25 acres, if you have a 25-acre lot, the first family apartment would violate the density, according to your reason, right?
That's what I'm disagreeing with it saying.
But according to your reason.
That's right.
Okay.
You had that.
I mean, I differ with that opinion. Do we have any, you're finished with it?
Well, aside from all these technicalities, I just, I mean, I think on a three-acre lot having two dwelling units is, you know, violates the general standards for a special use permit. Especially the, the possible impact on adjoining properties and certain ones.
Okay.
I mean, if everybody does this, that's, you know, the only way that I could see around it is possibly to put some restrictions on it, such as.
Well, that's.
Suggested, that, well, that it's only going, that the general regulation about it only be used by family members, but first, or it has to be used. for the first, or it has to be used for the first two years should be a permanent thing, and, and, and once, you know, the family situation changes, that this is going to be, uh, either reviewed or revoked. It's going to actually for a certain period of time, two years, five years, I don't know, but I don't think, I think this is a really bad precedent to set, because there's a lot of...
And this is because of the size of the parcel?
Well, the size of the parcel, sure, because there's a lot of non-conforming uses...
You mean lots?
Lots in the county, and if all of them are allowed to have a principal dwelling and a family dwelling unit, which in this particular case is probably below the twelve hundred square feet, but nevertheless, it's another dwelling unit, it's another septic, uh, field. Uh, personally, I haven't seen it, but it's mine, I haven't seen the plan or the health department application, but I think the board members know very well that under current regulations, the health department not only requires a primary, uh, septic, uh, site, but also a backup.
And they are subject to that, according to...
Well, I, I see that, but I mean, where are they going to put it on a three-acre lot?
That's not for us to decide, it's for the health department to decide.
Well, if they can't meet it, I'd say let the health department decide it, and then we continue it.
Yeah, of course.
I'm, I don't, I, as far as I'm concerned, there's other people around, there's other neighbors, they have wells, they have, I don't know, good dwellings.
And so...
And I think it's a bad precedent to say...
If the health department cannot approve a septic, then they do not get the building.
Well, I mean, cannot, you have the backup, I don't know what their requirements are.
I don't know, but, but, see, we don't necessarily get into all that, we leave that up to the health department.
Well, septic fields generally on the order of a hundred by a hundred and twenty feet, which is, uh...
A quarter, right.
A quarter acre. So that on three acres, there is a considerable possibility for, for...
Okay, maybe there, I mean, maybe there is, maybe they can comply with it, but I just, I think it's, I mean, if you have all the people with non-conforming lots in agriculture districts come in to apply to have two dwelling units, you're basically going to wind up circumventing and undermining their higher ordinance and the whole scheme of development.
Now, there is a combination for families, and that's what this is about.
Right, and if they wanted to do a family division, they could do, because they don't have enough.
Right.
So you're basically allowing them to do what they otherwise couldn't do by doing this. If they wanted to do a family division, they'd have to have a minimum of two acres on each lot, and they only have three, so they can't do that. And that's why I said it completely violates the whole basis of the zoning ordinance and the scheme of development that's in comprehensive plan as well as in the zoning ordinance in the agriculture district.
But we are allowed to do it.
I don't think you're allowed to, in recent...
No, we are allowed to do it.
That's what you said.
Is there any other discussion? Can we come up with a motion? Chris, you start it.
Okay, I, I move that we approve this application.
And subject to the health department standards and family department standards?
What about the condition that it's for a period of time?
Is that in your motion?
Uh, it's, it, it seems that, that's a difficult one, because it's my understanding that in a family subdivision, there is a requirement, a two-year requirement...
A family apartment.
A family apartment of, uh...
That the only family...
The only family is two years. So that in this situation, inasmuch as it is not a family apartment...
It is a family.
Oh, it is a family apartment, well, then, there you go, the two-year...
That is...
Okay, so it would apply.
One seventy dash sixty-two G standards, all standards.
So in other words, in three years, they could, somebody else that just got renting it out to anybody else who's not a family member?
That's right.
So you're not going to put a condition on it?
He's taking a motion.
I, I, I don't feel that is a reasonable or a enforceable tradition.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'm...
So we have a motion and a second, is it any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. You've got your, you've got your, that's all. Okay, we just have to, um, assume your...
Mr. President, the property is wrapped again, and the fee to call for it, or the...
Look, they're, they're right on the line.
Oh, no, actually, the entire property is unwrapped again, it just, it just, it shows up there.
Okay. Okay, so the next one, I'm not sure why I have two, do I have awards? Oh, I have it. Um, okay, so the next application is for a special use permit to operate and use a three-bedroom house as a tourist home. And Susan Hager is here, you're the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will let you know that I have a conflict on this, so I'm not going to participate in this.
He, he's going to tell the truth, the whole truth, he wants to tell the truth. And you're Susan Hager, and you're the applicant?
Yes.
Is this your property?
Yes.
Be clear about that. Okay, so just tell us a little bit about choices.
So, uh, two summers ago, we reported to the committee, the city of permits around the house in Altona Palace, tourist home.
Which is not your house.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, um, I'm trying to permit, that's been a successful venture for us, and so I'm here tonight to find for a permit for that different house I'm calling right.
You're going to continue the other one?
Um... That's, um, we're unsure of that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, for a while.
And, let's see, so you're going to file meals and lodging taxes and all that.
Right, so I can figure together, we can pay the property taxes and we'll pay the additional lodging taxes. Which is, I guess, I don't know.
Okay. And, um, did we have any opposition or...
No.
The, uh, planning commission didn't, uh, have any, uh, questions or problems with it. They were concerned that Susan, the, the manager, and that she was close at hand to monitor the use and enforce the, uh, conditions of the rental, and she assured that she was.
So you, you were close? Yes, I've been, this is a house that I've been living in, actually, for twenty-five years, and I'm building another house next door.
On this, that's a...
No, it's on a separate place.
Okay, um, so that's your report from the planning commission? Is it any questions? You're, you're out, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
No.
No, it was nice.
And you understand all the standards and the conditions?
Yes, well, right, I think for two years I can, you know, do it inside, pretty much.
Okay, um, are there no special, uh, conditions applied or recommended?
Uh, not that I can confirm.
Just the sixty-six K. One seventy-sixty-six K.
Oh, I'm sure that's two K.
But it's all, all about this.
Okay, um, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is it anybody to speak in favor or against or about this application? I'm closing the public hearing. Do we have a motion, a dissent, or any discussion?
I move that we grant this application.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
According to standards, one seventy-sixty-six K.
Standard? The planning commission?
Uh-huh.
Okay, any discussion, Chris? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? One, I guess, I didn't know, you're saying that.
Recuse, recuse.
Recuse. Recuse. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to say that to me, the paper that I got, and I...
Well, just as there's a list, uh...
Right, second to page. Right, I got that one. I have one, it's in the chest, I have not let you know, but... No, I got my paper, it was out, we were going to, so... This is from...
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
No problem.
It's from last, the lessons.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's a little dry. It's a little dry.
Hey, you put it there. I guess you got it.
It's from last month.
Which is?
It's last month.
The chat, and the Sperryville Barn.
Yeah, that was there?
Yeah, I, I didn't have the phone, maybe.
I'm here, please, too. That's the one, sorry. Okay, um...
That's it?
I guess we're done.
We'll do again.
Any second, if ever?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. Thank, thank you all for coming.